Just give it a minute for folks to come in from the waiting room. As a reminder, please mute yourself unless you are testifying or presenting before the board. Good afternoon. This is a hearing before the Boston Cannabis Board. Today is Wednesday, August 11th, 2021. Today's hearing is being conducted pursuant to certain temporary amendments to the open meeting law. That is what allows us to meet virtually. Today's hearing will be reported and will be posted to the City of Boston's website. Before we review procedural matters, I'll introduce Chairwoman Kathleen Joyce.
Thank you, Leslie. My name is Kathleen Joyce. I'm Chair of the Boston Cannabis Board. I'd like to introduce my fellow commissioners, Commissioner John Smith, Commissioner Lisa Holmes, Commissioner Alejandro Sanquian, and Commissioner Darlene Lumbos. I'd also like to introduce our project manager Jasmine Nguyen and take this opportunity to thank Executive Secretary Leslie Delaney Hawkins, who is leaving us. Today is her last hearing and she will be moving on to bigger and better professional opportunities. But I think we all will be seeing her at some time in the near future. So Leslie, thank you for your service to the board and to the city. I know the cannabis community appreciates the hard work you've put in the last 15 months or so. And I think you've set us up for success as a board and as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the chairwoman, all the commissioners, and Jasmine is our project manager. This has been an incredible journey and I'm not going too far. So I will still be in Boston and I'm sure I'll be seeing you all soon. So I am actually now going to pass it on to Jasmine Nguyen, who's our project manager, and will be facilitating the hearing.
Hi, I will read each item into the record in the order that they appear on the agenda. I will ask who is present on behalf of each applicant. You will have five minutes to present to the BCB, followed by question and answers from the chairwoman and commissioners. Following the questions, we'll take public testimony, beginning with elected officials or their representatives, followed by the general public. Please utilize the chat function if you would like to testify on each matter. When you are testifying, please state your full name, address, and affiliation. Testimony will be limited to two minutes. Additional testimony may be submitted in writing and the record will be kept open until August 17th, which is next Tuesday at 5:00 PM. The BCB does not give more weight to written testimony than spoken testimony. And now we will begin with the first matter. The first two matters are the same entity, so I'm going to read both into the record. Licensee is Mass Citizens for Social Equity LLC. The license premise is at 561 Dudley Street, Roxbury. They have a recreational cannabis dispensary license. The application is for a change of beneficial interest holder, change of offices directors, and transfer of stock. Matter number two is Mass Citizens for Social Equity LLC, 3995 to 3997 Washington Street, Rosendale. They also hold a recreational cannabis dispensary license. The application is for a change of beneficial interest holder, change of offices directors, and transfer of stock. Who's present on behalf of the licensee?
Brian Chavez, welcome everyone.
Brian, are you doing the presentation?
Yes. Okay, hi, well, hi, well, thank you. Hi, my name is Brian Chavez. I am the owner of Massachusetts Citizens for Social Equity, MCSC, and I have received approval for three retail cannabis locations, one being 561 Dudley Street, second 3995 Washington Street, and 43 Freeport Street. As you may remember, for our 43 Freeport Street location, we partner with C3 Industries. A little background, C3 is based on Michigan and it's an experienced multi-state operator of cannabis facilities in Michigan and in Oregon. The team is made up of brothers executives Encore and Vishal Rungta. Encore is on the line with us today. C3 is currently launching operations and a facility of cultivation and processing facility in Franklin, Massachusetts, which kind of mirrors their facilities that they already operate in Michigan and in Oregon. They will be supplying product to the stores at 43 Freeport Street and other stores in Massachusetts. And so, over the past year, we spent a lot of time with Encore and C3 working to get 43 Freeport Street off the ground and running after, you know, being blessed by you guys for getting approval. And right now, we're on the verge of building out the facility and launching operations, hopefully getting our building permit within the next few days. And we hoping to open that location sometime in November or December of this year. Following, over the last first year, over the last year, pardon, we also learned firsthand the difficulties of trying to raise capital for a cannabis startup. As you guys already know, you know, this is the type of business, we can't go to our local bank for a loan. And on top of learning the complex permitting, construction, and operating environment in the City of Boston, that led us to start discussions with Encore and C3 on possibly continuing our partnership from one store to three stores. One second, please. Yeah, so, you know, that was what brought us here to today. We and C3 decided that it'd be a good idea to move forward and we're just seeking your approval for that, for C3 to buy 49% of equity of ownership in 561 Dudley Street and 3995 Washington Street. And of course, it will be in adherence to the regulations and the equity ordinance on the city level and on the state level. And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Jasmine. I just want to confirm, will this change your equity status?
No, it would not. We, by maintaining 51% ownership, we have the control and interest of all three stores and it would not change my equity status.
Okay.
Or by any of the regulations.
Will there be any changes to operations at any of the locations?
The, the, the operations that will have, that will conduct at the locations will be, will mirror what was already approved for 43 Freeport Street. And again, we, all that documentation, operating agreement will be provided to the board to ensure that we're compliant, we're in compliance.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful whenever there is a change of beneficial, beneficial interest holders or offices directors on both the liquor and now the cannabis side, that's important to, for, for us to take into consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just one quick question. Thank you, Jasmine. So it's for all three of them, right?
No, three. Correct. Right now, we have two at full ownership, one partnering with C3. We want to do partnership at all three locations.
And for all of them, it will be 49%?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sorry, Attorney Dan Glickman from Prince Lobel. Just to clarify, Commissioner, it's 49% with Erba and 51% for Brian at all, across all three locations.
Got it. Technical stuff, alright.
Attorney Glickman, if you could just clarify that on Erba, which is item three, those disclosures were already made to the board. This is just a change in the actual corporate entity that's going to be holding them.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you. That's correct. The, the next matter on the agenda is for Erba. And we can discuss, obviously, when that matter comes up, but that previous structure was previously approved as 4951 by the board and we just have a minor corporate adjustment for that, for that matter.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Holmes? No questions? Commissioner Sanquian?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions. Can you? I have a number of questions. So I have, I have, there are a number of concerns that come up with, for me with this and, and most of them are, are that your interests, Brian, are protected here. Have you done a, a market analysis of what the future value of your two establishments are and how that compares to what you are at this point selling? And for how, and what sort of the price differential there is? To give up 49% of two businesses is a significant amount. And so, you know, I just, so I was kind of reading through the paperwork and just trying to figure out kind of what was the timeline here? Because you've been working with them for a while for this third establishment. Was this something that you thought of when you first came into us and, and kind of why that wasn't discussed? And what your, what you thought your financing options? Because I, I think part of the strength of your application was one, if I remember correctly, one of your locations you own, right, is a bodega? And the other one is a pizzeria? And does your uncle own that or, or is there no relation?
So, just to clarify, Commissioner, the, I think those first locations, both locations were bodegas owned by different uncles and I currently operate a pizzeria and a burger restaurant, but.
Part of the, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'm definitely, I can ask you a little bit more clarity on the, the first set of questions.
So yeah, so I'd really be interested kind of on the timeline here. I also want to know, do you have separate attorneys representing you as you change your corporation? As you, as you change the structure of your corporation? You know, what, what I, he transparent, what I'm concerned about is sort of these, you know, we, we give a license, a very strong application. I think your application would have been strong even if, you know, they were partners from the beginning. But sort of, sort of a back, back way entry for non, non-equity applicants to kind of skip the line and not, and not have to, you've had to come before us now four times, right? And now there too. So, I'm sorry, I know I asked you like a million questions. I don't know if you remember them all, but basically kind of like, what is your, have you done a market analysis of what you are giving up? I know that if you can't, if you can't, if you don't have the funding to open a store, you're not giving up anything because you wouldn't make anything. But there, just kind of have you done a full, have you looked at all your options? Because I, I'm just going to state it again, 49%, unless this was something that you had thought about from the beginning as doing, is this significant profit margin for you to just hand over to somebody? I don't know what the build-out costs are and I don't know that I even need to know and it, it wouldn't necessarily affect my, my decision here. I just think as a board, we need to, and something that we've been doing recently is looking at finances a lot closer and as more applicants come in, equity or non-equity, really take a closer look at what their, what their options for financing. So we see their options are not strong. There's always this possibility of a non-equity applicant coming in. Because even though it's still majority equity, I think the spirit of, of what the ordinance was, if we had every equity be owned 49% non-equity is not exactly what we, what, what was in mind. So, Brian, if I need to repeat any of that, let me know. I know some of it was for you, some of it was for the board, some of it was for your attorneys. But yeah, I just, I think that there's some, it's just, it, it feels a little funky to me if I can just be kind of colloquial here.
Alright, no, no, and I thank you. And if I can just address each question piece by piece to the best of my ability. Alright, so in regard to your first question, you know, did we reach, so what protections do we have selling 49% equity to this non-equity product? One second, please. Sorry, guys. So, one, first off is that we, we're going to apply the same structure and operating that, so to what we presented to you guys before at 43 Freeport Street. We've had the attorneys review the, you know, the conditions of the operating, the structure of the deal to make sure that it complies with the equity ordinance that you guys uphold and on top of the CCC regulations. Following for the second question, a market analysis of, you know, did we explore other options that, you know, no, to quite clear, we didn't take the first deal on the table as I really, in this situation, it could have been me borrowing from, what are those, hard money lenders at 18%? You know, and if you do the math on that with millions of dollars, with even $1 million to, let alone $2 million, that tends to be the standard rate that professionals say it takes 750,000 to $1 million to open up, to make the store operational. I didn't feel comfortable, I don't feel comfortable with debt at all. I, I'm the type of person, I'll pay all my bills, all my employees stay with $0. I don't like owing people money. So I wasn't comfortable with going the debt route. What I seen was I could have liquefied or diluted myself by selling equity 1% here, 10% there. But then I would have had multiple partners and I really felt comfortable with the chemistry that me and Encore and his brother, and my, my brother, we developed on working to, to close the 43 Freeport Street, 43 Freeport Street deal. And then after, you know, reconsidering, why wouldn't, it would be a good idea to continue the partnership that we have onto the other two stores rather than me have multiple partners at one store, multiple partners at another store, and then C3 partner? I just felt like it would have got messy. And, and a commitment that I got was from C3 and we all got in agreement is all our commitments to the community were going to be still satisfied, you know. I could be specific, Dudley Street, the beautification through Green Space and Rosendale, the on-in that was suggested by residents to shelter people for bad weather in the front of the store. Like little things like that, I felt comfortable that one, I was going to be 51% owner. The commitments I made to the board and the community were going to get met. And I'll throw in another little caveat, Commissioner, again. I, this deal is going to give me the opportunity to become the landlord of these properties that I'm going to be able to buy from my uncles. And, you know, I'll tell you one thing right now, being as a small business owner, minority business owner, it's, it's such a plus knowing that I'll own the property and I'll be majority owner, owner of the operational business. Right now, in my last six years of being business, I've always been a renter, a renter. And it's really hard to build wealth when you don't own property in your business, so.
Can I jump in, Brian?
Yeah, if you want to jump in, that's my brother, Jason.
Hey, Sanquian and, Commissioner Sanquian and members of the board. This wasn't, speaking to some of your concerns about this being a funky thing where, you know, a big multi-state operator basically got into the front of the line, you know, using us. That, that, I can assure you, that wasn't it. To your point about having separate attorneys, yes, we do have separate attorneys that worked on us on the Freeport deal, on the previous Freeport deal. That wasn't, nothing was imposed on us. You know, thankfully, I've had experience with it in California and I knew certain things where equity is diluted and we ensured that that's not what happened here. You know, you guys will be getting the operating agreement to see this isn't your standard operating agreement that's just full of, like backdoors, as we call them. We do have separate attorneys looking at this current transfer of stock. It's not the same attorneys. We don't use the same attorneys. And we really wrestled with this with our business advisors. We spoke to GFA Financial. Being able to get a loan from, aside from the hard money loan, being able to get a loan from that creditor wouldn't have been possible without us actually owning the property. So this deal is, it feels good for us because like my brother just stated, if he retains 51% of the business, he becomes the landlord of the businesses, which is huge in this industry. There's, there's, once these things actually open up as a retail establishment, the value of the property and the land goes up. And he's going to be collecting the rent every month on a debt-free property. The property's going to be debt-free. He's going to be collecting all the rent and maintaining 51% of the, of the business. Like I said, this wasn't something that we came, you know, it was easy to come to, but given our, all of our options and all the things out there and us needing to open these things quickly, this was actually like a real blessing in disguise and a model for how they should be done. Once you see our operating agreement and once you see our, our paperwork, you'll see that, you know, we really fought hard to make sure that our equity wasn't being diluted and that nobody were able to scrutinize us and say that, you know, we did any kind of funny business. It's just not, it's not in, in line with who we are as a family or as business people. So you'll feel good about that. And then just your attorney question, yes, we have separate attorneys working on us with the operating agreement. And I know there was a few questions there, so if you can just remind me, I, I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
Add in what my brother leaves off.
No, you, you covered a lot of them. And just to be clear, it wasn't insinuating that I thought you or your brother did anything nefarious or funky. I, I was more about sort of the whole, I was, you know, mainly concerned about the attorneys. I was, I was wondering if your new LLC, Brian, was going to be a real estate LLC and allow you to buy the buildings? So I'm glad, I'm happy to hear. So I, you know, I, I wasn't concerned that you all had went into any of this, you know, in any, you know, not in good faith, but I do think that it does raise the question for the board to really look more closely at the finance. I think we've started to do that a little bit. And how can we support, because this, this deal, I think, is going to, and as you explained, you know, owning the buildings and, you know, I'm, I'm married to a small business owner, so I know, I understand all of that. And I also understand what 49% of a business is, so. So that's sort of like razor red flag for me. So, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable that your interests have been protected. I'm concerned about the precedent, precedent this makes moving forward and how we can assure that it's not happening in any kind of, in bad faith, right? Or that people aren't being protected or their, your issues are coming forward. So, so yeah, so my other question was about the, the cannabis LLC and what, what type of LLC that was. I did have a question specifically on what was, and, and Madam Secretary, I don't know, we can pull this up, it's the applicant, for application for change of condition? I think for either of them is fine.
So, sorry, the question about the specific application?
It was a, it was, it's called applica, it was what was sent to us in preparation. It was called application for change of condition.
Yes, and then they also disclosed all of the proposed new beneficial interest holders.
So that was my, so I guess that was my question. I, you don't, I guess you don't need to pull it up, but it, I was confused because it looked like you had multiple ownerships, like, C3 Industries, obviously, what was owned, but then what is, sorry? Estoy poniendo viejita. QPS Funding LLC, Broadstone Holdings. Kind of, these are shareholders. So I'm just, I'm a little confused as how they relate to C3 Industries? Because you have a whole other list of people for C3 Industries.
Yeah, Encore is on the line and so is Dan Glickman. He can explain all that, but that's all, that, that's all under the C3 umbrella, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, right, Dan?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to provide additional information, but we provided all of the ownership information from the C3 side. So that larger list of individuals and entities that are associated, those are investors and members of the C3 entity that's the 49% owner.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, Commissioner, as well, we're required to disclose all of our ownership as well to the city in these processes. So that was just a meeting that requirement to show all of our ownership. And we had provided that before as well when we applied for 43 Freeport in this partnership. So it was just providing all of that, that detailed breakdown again. And if I could just maybe address some of your questions from before as well quickly. We really are doing this, I think, out of a feeling that the partnership is actually quite win-win for, for both sides. And, and really, I think in the desire to do something that we think is very aligned with the social equity program, I totally understand your point about us taking a meaningful ownership stake in the businesses. But, but Brian is getting significant value for that. We really have, I think, found that we work well together and, and we are also a family-run business on our side. And I think there's a, a real meeting of the minds there. I also come from an immigrant family. So we, we really think about things the same way. And in our minds, what we're doing at 43 Freeport was a really good fit and felt like it was, you know, being supported by the city and, and in line with how, how, you know, the, the social equity values and considerations of this board. So I just wanted to reiterate that we're really trying to do some, do something that we think is in line with these goals and these priorities. And, and I think in working together across these three stores, we create really strong alignment between the Chavez family and us. Whereas if they did have different partners in different stores and things, it may not work as smoothly. And I think, you know, at least from my standpoint, I think this is a way that Brian is going to create significant wealth for himself as we get these three locations, you know, with your blessing, as we hopefully can get them operational. And, 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 you know, our goal is to have them be the highest performing stores in the city as well. It's not just about opening the locations, but we want to be the best. And, and I think we have an opportunity to do something really exciting together. I don't know that there's another partnership like this in Massachusetts. So it's, it's something that we really hope that you guys would feel excited about. And, and it's not meant to be us trying to jump in front of the line or, or do something that's not consistent with, you know, what the city's priorities are. So I just wanted to say that quickly.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you. Those are my only questions.
Okay. Commissioner Lumbos does not have any questions at the moment, but reserves some right to follow up. Do any of the commissioners, chairwoman, have any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, now we will move to elected officials or representatives of elected officials. Is anybody from any of the council's office that would like to speak in support of this proposal?
Jasmine, I apologize, I had lost internet connection for a minute. Can you remind me which, which one we are at?
We're still on Mass Citizens, one and two.
Thank you.
And Jasmine, it may make sense just to read item three into the record because I believe that was also covered in the discussions. And then I would suggest just taking any testimony on those three and then moving to item four.
Okay. So, item three is Erber C3 Dorchester LLC, licensed at 43 Freeport Street. They also hold a recreational cannabis dispensary license. They apply for an application for a corporation to corporation transfer when no change to beneficial interest holders or operational contract. So we covered that one. Any additional questions on that matter from the board members? No? Any elected officials or representatives of elected officials that would like to speak in support of this proposal? No? Okay, so we will move to the general public. If you would wish to testify on this matter, please use the chat function or the raise your hand function in order to testify. Hello?
There's nobody wishes to testify, so the board will, will take this matter under advisement.
So those are all the matters before us today. Thank you all for joining us.
We got item four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item four, item four is Ascend Mass LLC. They are licensed at 268 to 274 Frenzy Street. They also hold a recreational cannabis dispensary license. Their current hours of operation is 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM and their proposed hours are 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Who is on the call representing the licensee?
Andrea Cabral, the CEO of Ascend Mass, and with me is our attorney, Dan Glickman from Prince Lobel.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Secretary Hawkins and members of the board. I just want to take a minute to also thank Leslie, who has been incredibly helpful and very accessible. Certainly to us, I can't necessarily speak for everybody else, but certainly to Ascend, you know, this has been a process where we're sometimes learning as we go. And it has been a pleasure to have the level of collaboration and help that you provided. So thank you for your service to the commission, I mean, to the board and to the City of Boston. I appreciate it. I know you're not going far, but I just wanted to say thank you. Yes, this is Ascend's request to expand its hours of operation at the. Yes, this is, uh, Ascend's request to expand its hours of operation at the closing end by one hour to nine o'clock. In addition to notifying, uh, the butters with the prescribed process. I also, uh, we did our community meeting, which I assume John Romano will, uh, weigh in on in a second. I reached out personally to the West End Civic Association, uh, to Susan Benoit, who's the head of the zoning and planning committee. And I also reached out directly to Jay Walsh from the Downtown North Association, um, and explained, uh, what we were doing and why, or what we were requesting and why. No objection from, uh, either of them. Although, obviously, you know, it's a public meeting. I don't know if anyone, uh, may show up, uh, to voice an objection, but I've not heard any. Ascend opened on April twenty ninth. We've been open for just over about a hundred days now. We've had no issues or problems. We've managed our customer flow very well. We've managed queuing outside the store very well. And we've received nothing but positive feedback about the store itself, uh, and the store experience. So we're asking, uh, the board to allow us to expand our closing by one hour and, uh, allow us to operate from nine o'clock in the morning to nine PM at night.
Thank you. Chairman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Um, I know it only sounds like one hour, but, um, can you tell me why, um, why you originally closed at eight? You didn't request nine o'clock at the beginning? Uh, what was, what was the community process like then?
I think we had the first HCA in Boston. It was before there really was a process. Um, we were sort of, again, figuring it out as we went. And the hours that were proposed by the city were the nine to eight hours. Where there literally wasn't anything to compare us to and no sense of how a place would actually operate. And so we, we agreed to that as, as part of the HCA. I think expanding by an hour, um, brings us in line with other, uh, cannabis operations, both throughout Massachusetts. And I think there are, there's at least one other, uh, in Boston, if not two, that go, uh, twelve hour day. So it keeps us competitive in that regard, but also because we have really, um, we take great pains to manage our customer flow through the website. So you place the order online, you then have a range of times where you can pick it up. Adding an hour on the end also makes, uh, eases that somewhat because we don't have people, um, waiting toward the end of the day to get in before we close at eight o'clock. We have an extra hour at the end. We can then space our ranges of pickup times a little bit better. But we do want to stay competitive with other, um, other cannabis companies in terms of, um, the amount of time per day that we are open. And where we haven't had any issues or any problems managing thus far, even with the TD North Garden, you know, sort of ramping back up. We know what their schedule is. We know what events are coming to the TD North Garden and we plan accordingly. We've had no issues, um, either with the increased crowd for their events or crowds coming from other restaurants, bars, or so forth, um, affecting, um, Ascend or its business.
Okay. I mean, from my perspective, I wouldn't compare, you know, one cannabis establishment to another. I would take a look at the other establishments in this particular neighborhood and see what kind of impact your request would have on the neighborhood. And again, it's only one hour, but just for everyone's point of view, just because someone else might be opened, you know, twelve hours a day. I don't think every cannabis establishment in the city needs to be opened or should be open twelve hours a day. I think we have to look at the impacts in this particular neighborhood, um, as opposed to comparing it, one retail establishment to another. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Holmes?
Just quickly, what, um, what promises were made during, because I know you guys came in before this board was even established. So during your, um, host community agreement meetings, were there any promises or concessions made to the community that you wouldn't go past, you know, eight PM? Or what was, what was some of the, I guess, concerns of the community residents, if any?
No, there, there were certainly no, uh, promises made or assurances, given that we would stay from nine to eight. I think the only thing that we heard during the community process was a concern about what, it was, it was specific to TD North Garden. And it was really about what if there's a family event? So if they have the Wiggles or something that, a Disney on Ice kind of a thing. There was this sort of idea that just having a cannabis establishment in the general area would somehow impact, you know, families or children coming in. And we responded to that by making sure people understood that no one under the age of twenty one can enter a cannabis establishment. There will be nothing obvious from the outside of the establishment that would lure children or, and these kids, we assume, would be largely with their parents. So it wasn't about the specific hours of operation as much as it was about, uh, a family type event happening at the TD North Garden. And, uh, and the worry at that, in those early days, the worry that having the mere presence of a cannabis establishment might have a negative impact. But no, no assurances were sought and none were given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner San Diegan?
That was my exact question, actually.
And Commissioner Longos doesn't have any questions at the moment. So now we will move to elected officials or representatives of elected officials.
Members of the board, this is John Romano from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant here had met with our community as well as, uh, participated in a butters meeting earlier this year. Um, one thing we will say from this applicant is that the community has had general support as well as they have received support from the local civic associations in the area. At this time, our office would like to go on record in support of this project.
Good afternoon, my name is Chair Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The council will like to go on recording support. This applicant has worked closely with the West End Civic Association and has been a good neighbor to the West End community. Due to their investment in the city of Boston, engagement with, with the community and continued willingness to be a good neighbor, the council will like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Are there any other representatives or elected officials that would like to speak in support? Seeing none, we will move to the general public. If you would like to testify, please sign up in the chat. Which I'm not seeing any.
I've been monitoring the chat. There have been no requests to testify.
Not seeing any requests to testify. The record will remain open till next Tuesday, which is the seventeenth at five PM. Um, and that is all the matters that are on for today. Right, Elizabeth?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Commissioners.